Our moderator tonight is from Stars and Stripes National Radio. And he does the Specialist Radio Hour, Mr. Chris Katnam.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn this on. Hi, everybody. How are you all tonight? I want to thank you very, very much for being here tonight. First, I want to thank Diana Howard and Mike Barnaby for putting on this great event, Virginia Beach Tea Party. But I also want to thank each and every one of you for doing something that a lot of Americans aren't doing right now. They're not putting the foot forward and showing the American public what patriotism really is. What it really is is getting involved and showing up and debating the issue and participating. So I want to thank each and every one of you especially for that tonight. Thank you. Give us a round of applause. In regards to our candidates, quite frankly, I consider it almost a profound encouragement to run in each state. As much hatred and the challenging of everyone's virtual veracity and credibility, I think we should give them a round of applause before they even start just beginning. Even though... One has to use the... One to the other. Yeah. Even though... Even though we went over the rules to bring her amongst us. Go ahead and review your time. Everybody's going to get a one-minute... Can you hear me at all there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Want me to talk louder? Okay. Everybody gets a one-minute opening, starting from the left to right. There will be equal amount of questions for each person. They have one minute to answer the questions. And if they are called out, they get a 30-second reload. That's the end of that question. Now, at the end, they all get a one-minute closing, and we will go the opposite direction. Anybody have any questions? One thing I'd like to say in regards to our tight people and the people that are streaming this live on Facebook, I want to thank you all also for the work and community that's possible. And the candidates seem to say this one thing, we've been doing these arguments with this group many, many years. And those people that take advantage of the time clock, try to keep for five, six seconds, five or six seconds or whatever, the fact that you are distracting from the rules actually almost loses the value of the answer to the question you did. So please keep that in mind. A strike of applause for the vote. Are we ready to have fun in the meeting forum?
Yeah.
All right, let's do it. Mayor Jones, you can start. One-minute opening.
Good evening, microphone. Microphone.
The word, all right?
Yes.
Great. Good evening. I'm Louis Jones. I am currently the Bayside representative on city council. And I'm also serving as the interim mayor until November. I've served on city council a total of 32 years, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And I think I've accomplished something for the city and the citizens of Virginia Beach. As we get through, go through the program tonight, I hope you ask me some questions so I can answer them, and they'll get a better idea of where I stand on the issue. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I want to thank the candidates. If you're retiring after the votes, let's pause for the very end, because there's going to happen to be timing, so we could have another one group coming right after this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brad Martin, and I'm your candidate for the Bayside seat on city council in this November's election. Thank you very much for being here. Your attendance here tonight is important to come and inform citizens, because we have a very consequential election coming up. We're going to choose eight of our 11 city council members. My quick story, people ask me why I'm running for city council. I talk about my son, Henry. He's 14-years-old. I want him to have an opportunity to go to college and to come back here to Virginia Beach, because there's a good job and a good lifestyle and a good home for him here. And hopefully, he'll decide to raise my grandbabies here. I'm a civil engineer. I've been a civil engineer in the tidewater area for 26 years. I've done stormwater and flooding. I've done development projects. I've done roads and transportation. And that skill set should be sitting around that city council table in these consequential times. Thank you again for being here. I'm Brad Martin in the Bayside District.
Thank you very much.
My name is John Coker. I'm a candidate for city council in the Beach District. And again, thank you all for coming out here tonight. Quick little bio about myself, retired Navy. Currently, I'm an IT professional. You know, when people ask me why I'm running for city council, to me, the answer is very easy, because I think it's about time that we make the priorities of the people of Virginia Beach, that's each and every one of you, the priorities of Virginia Beach. We know Virginia Beach is a tourism town, and we need to continue. And a vibrant tourism industry is important to our success. But we need to expand and diversify from that. I believe Virginia Beach can be an IT technology hub. We have the cables. We have the data centers. We have the skill sets here. As an IT professional, I think it just makes sense that I can help bring the city to do that. So again, I'd like to thank you all for coming out here tonight and asking what you think we have. I'm John Coker, running for Beach District. Thank you.
Mr. Kowalowicz.
Good evening. I'm Richard R.K. Kowalowicz. Most people call me R-K. I've been in business at the Oceanfront for about 35 years. I've lived at the Oceanfront for 30 years. I've fought numerous issues and battles for the Oceanfront and for the citizens of Virginia Beach. Over the decades, I've fought against corruption, stormwater. I've been talking since 2002. Paying the pressures since 2002. I've fought for businesspeople all across the city. And it's time the corruption stops. I understand the issues. We need to fight for a safer city and a less corrupt city. So in November, please vote for R-K.
Mr. Nygaard.
Thank you so much for letting me be here. I'm David Nygaard. I'm running for the Beach District, City Council. You know, I'm running because the conventional approach doesn't work anymore, and there's a lot of work we need to do. Some of you know my story. A single father with six kids. One of them is serving in the Coast Guard and getting married this month. I've got my 84-year-old father, and we're truly a multi-generational household. Some of you also know that I'm a retailer. I have the largest jewelry chains in the country, David Nygaard Fine Jewels, and your customers. Many of you know that in 2008, my bank went bankrupt, took me along for the ride, and I lost everything. Lost my house. I lost my seven stores. I lost my marriage. I lost a lot of things that my ex-wife, bless her heart, found in divorce, so I know where those went. And I've been able to recover. I rebuilt my business because Virginia Beach stood behind me. I'm a small-business guy, and I'm looking forward to talking about small-business solutions for this city. Thank you.
Ms. Henderson.
Hello. Some of you are familiar with me over the years. I'm Suzanne Henderson, and I'm running for city council in the Lynn Haven District. I've lived in Virginia Beach now for about 11 years. I'm a prior military spouse. We came here through the military. My son is in the Virginia Beach City Schools, and I'm an active realtor in our community. I'm running because I want to make all the citizens of Virginia Beach a priority, not just a select few. So please vote for me in November's election. Thank you. I'm Suzanne Henderson.
Mr. Maschall.
Good evening. My name is Mike Maschall. I'm running for the Lynn Haven seat on city council. First of all, I'd like to thank the Tea Party for putting on this event. It's no small amount of work that goes into putting on something like this. It's a great service to the city. I'll tell you a little bit about me. I grew up in Virginia Beach, went to Princess Anne High School, class of '97. Went to ODU for my bachelor's and my master's in physics. Went to George Washington University Law School for my juris doctor. I work as a patent examiner for the U.S. Patent Trademark Office, and also have a small solo family law practice on the side, part-time. The reason I'm running is because I love this city, and I want to serve the city by reducing the influence of entrenched power in our city government. And by entrenched power, I mean you have city council members who have been in office for 16, 20, 32 years. You have a situation where not only are those city council members entrenched, but so are the people that they're used to doing business with. And it's very difficult for a challenger to challenge an incoming... Well, I see I'm out of time, but we'll delve into the issues more soon. Thank you.
Okay, that ends our opening. Can everybody hear me back there? Good. Okay, good. Okay. That ends the opening. We're now going to go to the question-and-answer period. One of those pressing questions that the citizens of Virginia Beach wanted to know, and I'm going to start with you, Mr. Maschall, since you have the microphone. Should the city build a new city hall, or should it wait 15 years and do things like flooding?
Well, that's a nice softball question there. The answer to that is pretty obviously, no. There's nothing wrong with the city hall building that we have now. Plenty of times, I don't see a problem with it. On the other hand, we've all seen the problem of flooding getting worse and worse, and critical infrastructure maintenance like that has been deferred for long enough.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nygaard, would you take the answer to that question as well, please?
Thank you. So I agree, we don't need to build a city hall. I think the priority we need to have is for flooding. My solution is quite simple. I call it four-in-four. We take 4% of our budget and allocate it towards a priority of flooding, maintenance, and catching up, then we can solve this problem in four years. And I think that four years is an adequate approach to this. I don't want to take on extra debt to solve this problem. I think we can do it out of existing funds, and I'd like to see us do that. I think that... So I'd say 4% in four years, and it will save us a fortune.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, to stay on the same subject with a little bit more question, would you vote to prioritize flooding in the CIP, the Catholic Improvement Program? Well, actually, I've already done that. So we voted for $329 million in the Catholic Improvement Program this past year, and we will vote for additional money in the future for flooding. As to the question that was up earlier, flooding, of course, is the priority over the city hall. We probably will have to build the city hall sooner or later, but flooding is the priority right now. Mr. Mayor, can I ask you one other question? I want to have you up there if you'd be comfortable. Before Hurricane Matthew, which was like Arizona, had been flooding for years, how, where has the billion dollars in stormwater fees gone? Where has what gone? The billion dollars in stormwater fees gone? Well, we have a lot of problems with flooding or stormwater projects in the city of Virginia Beach. And frankly, a billion dollars sounds like a lot of money, but the truth of the matter is, it doesn't cover it all. And that's why we had to appropriate additional $329 million this year. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Martin, what is your reason, if you have one, to delay the immediate maintenance or new process concerning flooding? If you were at all, what would you... Would you have a reason to delay that?
To delay?
Immediate maintenance.
To delay the immediate maintenance?
On new projects.
I don't know that there is a reason to delay the immediate maintenance. You talk about, I don't know if it's a billion dollars, but the city is certainly collecting $40 million a year, every year, in revenues on that stormwater fee. And the city auditor did an audit of the last three years, and they spent $40 million this year. They spent $30 million each of the last two years. So it seems to me that there's about $10 million or $20 million extra in those stormwater fees that they're collecting. With a surplus like that, I don't know that there's any reason to delay maintenance projects that should have been ongoing projects as they've been collecting this money.
And Mr. Kowalowicz, a little bit of a switching gears here. Should taxpayers be used to benefit the private development?
That's my answer. Look, guys, I started in politics 18 years ago, all this exact mission. Government should not be picking winners and losers. City of Virginia Beach acts like a socialist city. Are you kidding me here? We have like businesses collecting a tax and generates our own competition, and nobody wants to talk about that?
I don't.
Look, I've been talking about it for a long time. That is a huge issue in this country. It separates us from the rest of the world. It should never happen. This is the United States of America. Government should never pick winners and losers, and this city has been doing it for at least 20 years, and it needs to stop. By the way, this is an important part to this answer. In the year 2002, we were $20 million to the good on our retirement fund. You know where we are today? $1.4 billion to the bad. Where's the money? Where's the money? We all know where it's at. Go down to the Oceanfront, see a little special rally, go down to the town center. And I've been talking about it for a long time. If you want it to end, vote R-K.
We'll give a applause, please. Mr. Martin. Mr. Nygaard, I'm going to be right here in a moment. Are you in favor of a $68 million sports center?
We've got vacant property down at the Oceanfront that, in the property down there by where the sports center is talking about, and the dome project, they are vacant properties that are not earning any revenue for the city. I think there is some sense to being in a public-private partnership when there's something unique, like a wave park or like this sports center. I'm not sure about the indoor track use and all that. And the other thing is, I don't know that it needs to be a $68 million sports center. I'd like to put a critical eye on why the expense is at $68 million. But I do see some value in the right public-private partnerships, especially when we can create unique features down at our Oceanfront that not only bring people from out of town and out of state to us, but bring kids from Kentsville out to the Oceanfront in October and November and March and April. That's what we need to do.
Mr. Corrigan, are you in favor of a $68 million sports center?
When the sports center started, the first projected value was $22 million. And that $22 million was going to be paid for by a dollar a night tax on the hotels, not coming from us. When it was at that pace, I was in agreement with it. Since then, it's gone up to $44 million, then I believe it was $58 million, and now $68 million. My concern, and was mentioned here just a long ago, when the arena was killed, how many items got moved from the arena and into the sportsplex project? I too would like to take a better look at that. Right now, I don't think $68 million for this sportplex will give us a return on the investment. I think we'd be paying a lot more than we'd be getting back. As it stands right now, and what I know right now, I would vote no for the sportplex.
Mr. Nygaard, how about yourself?
The question is the sportplex.
$68 million?
Yeah, that's true. I didn't have any problem with it at $22 million either. I think that when I saw the revenue projections and everything, I think that that was a good business. My understanding is they have pretty well rented out the pavilion, and they need to... They need more space. So I think, I like that at $22 million. I have a heartache at the $68 million and wonder why it went up so quickly. And then it bothered me that people didn't actually ask questions and want to delve deeper into that. So I think that we need to look at that closer. The other problem I have is, a lot of times, we talk about these events, and these venues, but we don't talk about the public safety issues. We've got a shortage of police force, and every time we have one of these events, we have an issue with public safety with regard to, whether it's human trafficking or some other issues going on at Beach. And so when my kids go to Beach, when I have twin daughters, when they go to the Oceanfront and they go to the sportplex, I want them to be safe. So I think that we're having half a conversation when we just talk about the money of these things. I think we also deal with the public safety.
Ms. Anderson, how about yourself? Ms. Henderson, sorry.
I have to look into it more, but right now, we need to prioritize flooding. We need to prioritize our infrastructure. We need to work on the foundation of Virginia Beach, because we do need to help our police officers and our fire and our rescue with everything going on there. We don't have enough people right now.
Okay, well, let me ask you this while you're up there. What are your plans, if any, for addressing the city debt? Do you have any plans for that?
I'm still researching that. There's more to go into it than just looking at it.
Okay. Mr. Maschall?
Well, I meant it's not enough to go into everything wrong with this sportplex project. It's a perfect example of how we're not spending smart in our city. Not only has this project tripled in cost since the bid was accepted, which to me seems like you should just walk out the door right then. The whole thing was based off of this study called the VICTA study, and I've been delving into that a bit, and R-K's got a copy of it right there. And there are so many inapplicabilities to this study to the project as it stands now that it really doesn't tell us anything about how profitable this investment is likely to be. The VICTA study predicted that over 50% of the usage of the sportplex is going to be for basketball, followed by volleyball, and then other sports. Track and field wasn't even mentioned, and yet that's the primary reason for the huge increases in costs that we're seeing now. And city council right now just blindly rubber stamps these increases in costs, and we're not even looking at, would we even get a better return on our investment if we put money towards paying down the debt instead?
Thank you. Ms. Henderson, let me ask you this question. Should we be routing Atlantic Avenue to benefit our developers' hotel?
No.
Sure, I see. Mr. Nygaard, how about you?
Gosh, how do you follow that?
That's great. Absolutely not. No, I just don't see the reasoning for private, for public money to go to the kind of private investment. I just don't see it, so absolutely not.
Mayor Jones, how do you feel about that? Should we be rerouting Atlantic Avenue to benefit the developer's hotel? I don't have a problem rerouting it. I have a problem with paying for it. And if rerouting it and it's agreeable with the neighbors and the people in the community, then I don't have a problem with rerouting it, but I'm not in favor of paying for it. Okay. Mr. Nygaard, how about yourself? I'm sorry. Mr. Kowalowicz.
I want to say something more than I want to, but oh, hell no. Let me talk about something a little bit more than, for me, because I've been at the Oceanfront for a long time. I've been in business there a long time. This VICTA study that they use to spend this $24 million to $68 million, which will be $100 million before it's over with, is a joke. I've called this company five times in the last three weeks. By the way, I've read all 200 pages. Anybody in the room read the 200 pages? That's great. That's good. Well, let me explain something to you. At $24 million, at $24 million, this report says it's going to cost the city $100,000 a year. So it's already in the hole before it ever gets going. We're not even talking about the $68 million that they're at right now. The convention center is underperforming. 73%, 73% of the convention center is used for sporting events right now. Why don't we spend $10 million, retool the convention center, save $100 million to fix stormwater?
Mr. Kowalowicz, the people say you've got to pause for the end. I've got a tourism question. Mr. Corrigan. Excuse me. Since the TIP fund is flush with money, should we reassess the revenue going to it?
I'm sorry, say it one more time, please.
Since the TIP fund is flush with money, should we reassess the revenue going to it?
That is an interesting question. And I think the revenue going in there should be reassessed, reassessed, and not just to the fund, but to every fund. Nothing should remain stagnant. No policy that we have in place year one will be the same in year five. Should there be changes? That depends on the assessment that we have there. But the TIP fund, to start, needs to be audited, because that's something that I don't think any of us have seen since it started. Where is the money actually coming from? Where's it going to? Yeah, one of the questions I had with some special events, the promoter for the event has to pay the city for services, so why is that money not going back into it? It's items like that, we need to find out where the money's going into and where it's coming out of. So audits, the first thing we do, then reassess.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martin, city council allocated ARP funds to Light Rail, but when Light Rail failed, they would not allocate those same funds to flooding. Is flooding a higher priority than Light Rail?
Flooding is clearly a higher priority than Light Rail. If you're going to take money out of one bucket for something else, whether it's the TIP fund for something, to pay for trash trucks, or whether it's out of the ARP fund to pay for light rail or stormwater, first of all, there has to be a very good reason for it, because what stops you then from taking something out of schools to pay for something else? That might be utility services. We pay our utility fees. What's wrong with taking them to pay for a sports center? So I think that the money that was taken out of the ARP fund needs to go back to the ARP fund. If there's a reason for it to be spent on stormwater, and I think a great case can be made for that, I think that it goes to stormwater. But it deals with the priorities of what's important. I don't think we can just take money out of one bucket and put it into another willy-dilly.
And Mr. Maschall, what have you actually done to make the city of Virginia Beach better?
That's a good question. Well, I've been active in my community politically. As most people know here, I'm a member of the Virginia Beach Democratic Committee. I know that's not the favorite side for most people in the Tea Party, but we do organize a lot of things that are good for the community. You know, we do things like Save the Bay Day, all sorts of things that, you know, we participate in the community in that way. I'm active in my local church. I've been attending New Life Church for about two years now, and I just recently became a full member. And, you know, it's...
Thank you very much. Ms. Henderson, same question. What have you done to make the city of Virginia Beach better?
I constantly volunteer at the public schools, not just my son's school, but other schools. I actually have been part of a program called Shine Girls, which is through Wave City Care. And we go into schools. I've been in elementary, middle, and high schools the last four or five years. And it's a program, that's a nine-week program, that gives back to the girls and redirects them so they actually have purpose worth in life. Every year, I do the school makeover, and I also am in choir at my church and give back to our community, just in the different community projects, helping people rebuild their own, basically anything that's rebuilding someone's life.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nygaard? Can you hear me back there? I don't hear you very well. Would you like to speak louder? I will speak louder. Can you hear them?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
What have you done to make the city of Virginia Beach a better place?
That's a great question. Frankly, many of you know that I grew up here. I went to Kentsel High School, went to Lincoln Mary, I went to Regent University. I've had business here since, gosh, you know, my mom started this business back in 1978. We were doing art shows. And I've continued that business. She started that from scratch, continued that business through the president, paying business taxes and everything else. My goodness, we can talk about taxes. I've been involved with six children, and we have been coaching soccer, and I've coached baseball. I've sponsored a baseball team. I can't tell you how many baseball teams and soccer teams. I've been serving on a number of boards throughout the last 35 years. And I guess the last thing I might say is, I've always been committed to charities. Many of you know of my involvement in a lot of the charities, from Children's Hospital Kings Daughters to, gosh, cystic fibrosis, muscular dystrophy, American Heart Association, keep going on. But I've been committed to charities. Just in the last 35 years, I think we donated in the course of around $3 million to local charities.
Thank you. Mr. Kowalowicz?
Yes, thank you. Of course, I started out serving in the military, and I think that serves all communities out pretty well. I think all the veterans who are here as well. But I'm one of those guys out there that, when I talk, you know, I see a problem, I tend to open my mouth and say something about it. And that ended up getting me elected multiple times as my neighborhood's typically president. And as the president there, we did a lot of things. We put in Halloween, Halloween street safety guards, you know, so the kids can get across the street without getting hit by cars. We did everything from park cleanups and volunteering. Other items I was doing was, I worked with VFW, trying to help the veterans as much as possible. And another area that I'm doing, actually doing right now, working with a couple of local organizations, trying to get kids as young as the second grade more interested in computers.
the street without getting hit by cars. We did everything from park cleanups and volunteering. Other items I was doing was I worked with VFW, I was trying to help the veterans as much as possible. And another area that I'm doing, I actually do one right now, work with a couple of local organizations, trying to get kids as young as the second grade more interested in computers. So, you know, and we'll work with NASA, and we're also working with the Cartoon Network on that, get them interested in computers and get them started young for a great career in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, would residents defeated light rail in the referendum, would you bring it back?
No.
Mr. Martin, would you bring it back?
I don't get to say what I've done that makes the city of Virginia Beach better? No.
Mr. Kowalowicz, would you bring it back?
I still have the rest of my minute. My son and I volunteer for Special Olympics. We focus on the twin team. It's so great to see a 14-year-old jump in the pool with Special Olympics athletes. I think some of my best work in my early political career was being the newsletter editor of the Bay Lake Pine Civic League newsletter. I started a business here in Virginia Beach. I employed six people at the peak of our success, and then I merged into another company. But one of the things I'm most proud of is down in the historic neighborhood of Sea Tech. They built the new Bird Neck Road, and they put a median in the road right past the Rehoboth Church entrance, and the median was blocking the turns into the Rehoboth Church entrance. And even after I lost my election in 2014 and I was no longer in city council, I was able to convene a meeting with the deputy city manager and the concerned folks, and we got the city to break that median and let those folks get into Rehoboth Church like they had been before Bird Neck.
I'm going to remind everybody the answer was no. Mr. Kowalowicz?
When it comes to light rail, absolutely not. But I'd actually take it a step further. The path that was designed for light rail, I'd love to see a walking or bicycle path there. And when we build that, we don't need to sneak in light rail infrastructure underneath it so it wouldn't come back later. We need a good, I think a good walking path and a good bicycle path would take us a long way.
Mr. Kowalowicz?
No. So no light rail, John Atkins and I were in his house, we gave him dinner, and we came up with this team to put together a team to stop what was coming here. There are many people in this room, Reed and Diana and Robert, we and Jimmy, we all got together and made light rail go away. But I want to talk about what I've done for the city. Because I can't...
You notice I didn't have to ask that?
Just last week, 23rd Street was underwater. I met with the people from stormwater, and they're now going to fix 23rd Street to fix their stormwater drains, which, by the way, are six months delayed. But I got that done for my neighbors, and it's pretty important. Just two days ago, I was at city hall pulling a permit to do a handicap man cave for a guy who's handicapped. So he'd have a place in his backyard, he could bring his friends over in wheelchairs to get it done. Multiple occasions, if I got permits for people, building permits, helped them get through the process. Can I have another minute?
This is a question I'd like to ask everybody in here. Can you hear me now? This question has been known to a lot of citizens for a long, long time. Would you vote to put district voting on the ballot? And why or why not? We'll start with you, Mr. Nygaard.
I could want to talk about light rail, but okay. Yeah, I would go ahead and put district voting. I think it's a good idea. We're the only city in the country that does what we do in terms of diluting vote, and I think we should go ahead and institute where we vote in the ward. Anybody want to hear about my light rail plan? Thank you. We've already bought this land. What are we going to do with it? I think we tear up the rails, we get the state to pave it, and we can have a trolley going from Oceanfront all the way to Newtown Road. I'm a business guy. I'd like to validate the concept. Now, I think light rail is just way too expensive, and it's just not economically viable. But, you know, when you have these stops, you do have some economic hubs. I think there's going to be some benefit of that. So I'd like to study that and consider taking a road and paving it. I do like the walkway, and I would put a walk and a light path on the other side, put some nice lighting there. We'd have a nice path, and we'd have a dedicated path for an effective transportation system from the Oceanfront to light rail, and we could test it out, see how we like it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mathiell, would you vote to put district voting on the ballot? Why or why not?
I'm glad you asked this question, because it goes directly to the point I was bringing up in my opening statement about entrenched power. And the fact that we're on an at-large voting system instead of a district-wide voting system right now is part of why the power is so entrenched in our local government. It's very difficult for a challenger to run against an incumbent in this city, because they have to campaign not just to the voters in their own district, but to everyone in the entire city of Virginia Beach, largest city in the Commonwealth. As a result, most challengers just plain don't have resources to reach enough people. And so as a result, you get the incumbents elected over and over again, and that's why we have the situation that we have now. So yes, I would support going to district voting, and I would also support a two-turn limit on serving in city council, because it's really important that we have turnover in city council for it to serve its fundamental democratic purpose of consistently inserting the people's desires into our city government.
Ms. Henderson, what about you?
I would have to say no, because all of the city should be able to vote, because all of city council votes for the different issues that affects the entire city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones, do you approve of the city manager's performance?
Altogether, no. I think there's been some issues that we've had with the city manager. Not only have I talked to him about him, but also has the other members of the city council. Has he done such a bad job that it's come time to terminate him? I don't think so. But I do think that he needs to get his priorities straight on some issues, and the council has counseled him on that, and he has an opportunity to do that and perform in a manner that the council will find acceptable. If he doesn't do that, then the council will make another decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Martin, do you approve of the city manager's performance?
In the instances that we know about, I certainly do not. In instances that I know about, as an engineer dealing with the city, dealing with the planning department, and seeing directives come straight out of the city manager's office that are in conflict with design ordinances and development ordinances, I do not either. Now, I don't know the whole backstory, and I don't know all of the issues that city council has discussed with the city manager, but while I have questions about the city manager, I also have questions about the city council's response to the city manager. It doesn't even seem like there's been a hand slap or a public admonishment. If he is able to keep doing the things that he has been doing for the last couple of years, then with no response from the city council, why would he stop doing those same things?
Thank you very much. Mr. Kowalowicz?
My first day in office, I would send the gentleman a memo and ask you for his resignation. Depending on the overall election, if there's enough of us, and if he says no, then we'll fire him. Simple as that. When it comes to his performance, there has been a consistent pattern of discrimination, disrespect, and poor leadership. He may know who's 1, 2, 3s and ABCs when it comes to being the city manager, but he doesn't know how to be a leader. The city's currently facing a discrimination complaint about another issue that he does. He's berated police officers, he's berated employees, and did you know, he's appointed 11 senior positions since he was appointed in 2016? All of them, men. There's something there. He needs to go. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kowalowicz, should the Virginia Beach Development Authority be eliminated?
So bad, so bad. Let me just tell you this. I've posted some things on Facebook, which I hate my way Facebook, but I've just got to do it. The Development Authority is so crooked, it is so unbelievable. Either everybody needs to be fired, or it needs to be gotten rid of. My personal opinion, it needs to be gotten rid of. We do not even, you let us to make tough decisions, it's our job to do our financial, do the financial duties for you guys. If you don't like us, you fire us. But I want to talk about this at-large system a little bit, too. Since 2002, I've been talking about this. It is the money that makes things happen. Look, $2 million to spend against me to keep me out of the mayor's race, $2 million to keep me in office, that's unheard of. It's record-breaking in the state. That's never happened before in a local election, because they can buy all the advertising, they can whisper campaigning, they can lie about you. It's got to stop. With the district system or the ward system, you can knock door to door, you can meet everybody in the neighborhood, and I'll see you later on the line.
I want to figure that answer before I ask the question. Okay, Mr. Nygaard, the city has a propensity to bury citizens in doubt, to conceal their intentions. If elected, how will you remedy this problem?
Well, a lot of it actually does go to the city manager, probably, you talked about earlier. I believe we've got to have transparency in our government. We need to know exactly what's going on and when it's going on. And what I'm very concerned about are the inside deals that we see going on. We've got a city manager who consistently undermines the city council. We've got specifically inside deals that are being given to certain priority people, and what I think it does is it makes, it scares good money away from Virginia Beach. Now, I sat on the William Mary Entrepreneurship Board with a gentleman who had about $12 billion to invest in various real estate projects. He didn't put a dime in Virginia Beach. He said, "Good money walks away from Virginia Beach, because it's hard to do business here if you're not part of the good old club." And so I think that's a significant problem. So I would definitely deal with transparency, and I think that the, I hate to steal your mind, but we need it in the corruption. I mean, I think that it's absolutely corrupt that we've got inside deals.
Back according to the next question, Ms. Henderson, what should be done about the conflicts of interest on boards and commissions?
What should be done about it?
Yes.
If there's a conflict, goodbye. We can't be on it.
Mr. Mathiell?
Well, that about sums it up, but, you know, we have to have leadership in place that will actually do that. You know, there's, a lot of what we see in government, really at all levels, is a lot of sort of technical lawyering when it comes to ethics, who say, "Oh, well, the rules let me do that, you know, so it's okay if I do it." But the appearance of emprfoliation is important to avoid, and whether or not you're allowed to do it, the appearance of having, for example, one's own family member appointed to a ward that your elected body appoints is an appearance of a conflict of interest, and we should have leadership that's conscious of that enough to avoid it.
Mr. Mayor, I won't take that much longer. Mr. Mayor, does the city have an organization, charter, or boards and commissions, and who do they answer to?
The boards and commissions that the city council appoints answers to the council, but not all boards and commissions in the city are appointed by the city council. So that's simply the question to answer to your question. Those that we appoint, we can ask them to answer to us. If we don't appoint them, we don't have any control.
I have a question here also, this goes back to tourism for a minute. If tourism, I'd like each one of you to answer this if you've been coming up. If tourism keeps our taxes so low, how come you raise them every year?
Well, number one, we don't raise them every year, but we do raise taxes on occasion. For instance, in last year, we raised taxes for the purpose of creating a full-day kindergarten in the city of Virginia Beach. That was a valued decision. We made the decision that we thought it was important for the children, young people in Virginia Beach to get it started as early as possible in their education. So we make each one of those decisions about whether we're going to raise taxes or not raise taxes based upon the consensus value, the value consensus of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Mr. Martin?
It's not just a question of whether the taxes get raised, because our property tax rate does sometimes stay at the same rate, but when our property value is appreciating, that is a tax increase. When our stormwater fee and our sewer fee and our trash collection fee increase, that is a fee increase, so it doesn't go on the books as a tax increase, but it is a hit on the homeowner's wallet. And when you have most homeowners, the average homeowner in Virginia Beach pays about $200 a month in property taxes, and then they get hit with a utility bill every month now that's about half that amount. It's about an $85 or a $90 utility bill, whether you turn the water on or not, because you are paying a daily rate for your sewer fee, you are paying a daily rate for trash collection, a daily rate for a stormwater fee. Those numbers add up, so it's not great to pat ourselves on the back that we have the lowest property value tax rate in the region, when we've got these fees that are multiplying
Let's be clear. The city does not have a revenue problem. It has a spending problem, okay? When we talk about things like kindergarten, things like that, it's a priority issue there. I agree with kindergarten, but you know what? I'm tired of putting the kindergartners and the police officers and the teachers out there saying, "We have to have a tax increase to pay them." Shouldn't they be paid first? And then we fine $10 million for our hotel? Priorities. That's where it is.
Kowalowicz?
The reason is, is very simple. Those tax dollars collected at the Oceanfront are not going to the general fund. They're going to the TIP fund, which go into other projects, so it's a never-ending cycle. But the citizens in the general fund get to pay the liability on it. That's what's going on. People need to understand this, that the Oceanfront since the year 2000, we're declining what they call beds and heads kind of thing. We have less occupancy in the last 17 years than we did in the year 2000, but we have as higher, higher rates, and that's hurting us, guys. This public-private partnerships, we've got hundreds of millions of dollars invested that are not returning anything. The convention center's been a disaster. I talked about it in the year 2002, I was fighting against it. These things need to stop. You need to have somebody with common sense involved, and I have a doctorate degree in common sense. This is not hard to figure out.
Nygaard?
I have a master's degree in business, but I agree. No, I agree, we do not have a revenue issue in my mind. We do have a spending issue. I think it's not really a spending issue, it's a priority issue, as everybody is saying here. I think we, I've done many budgets in my businesses, and we can certainly create priorities. I would say that we need to set the priorities in terms of flooding and the essential services that we expect as people here. Now, and I also think that in terms of the fees, that if we're going to collect money, we need to keep our word. We need to, if we're going to collect money from some project, we need to keep our word and use that money for that project. And I guess last of all, I just want to throw out a high idea, and I'm kind of an idea guy. I'm an entrepreneur, I've done entrepreneurship, so I love, I love the play of ideas. I heard of a city that did, ooh, I got 15 cents. I heard of a city that basically froze the assessments and encouraged long-term residential investments in those houses. I kind of like that idea, where people buy a house and we freeze the assessment until they sell it and assess the market value. That's an idea.
In the interest of time, what I want to do is I want to ask a couple of quick questions. Can you hear me? For the sake of time, I want to ask a couple, I want to ask a couple, I'm sorry, I'm doing the best I can with this. I'm going to ask a couple of quick questions. The first question is going to eliminate everybody but the new candidates. Party insiders like to tell new candidates to pick a sign. Who's side are you on? Very simple. Who's side are you on? You can start with yourself.
Well, this is something that, you know, I've been addressing from the very beginning of my campaign, because I haven't hidden from the very outset that while this is a nonpartisan race by law, I am a member of the Virginia Beach Democratic Committee, and I'm not going to hide that. But that said, I believe that there's a major reason why these races are nonpartisan, and that is that the right and left divide that exists for a lot of the national and even statewide issues don't really apply to the local level, especially in a Dillon Rule state, where we just have a finite list of things that we even can do as a city council. And I think as far as the things that city council does, we can all come to an agreement, whether we're Democrats, Republicans, Tea Party, whatever, Libertarians, all of us, we're all Virginia Beach residents, and we all want to see our money spent wisely and spent on all of us.
But I think it really comes down to, are you on the citizens and the people's side? Are you on the government's side? It's kind of like that, that's what I'm basically...
That's what you're saying. That's the easy answer right there. A city council member's job is to be on the people's side, not the government's side. The city council is the democratic check to the government's power.
Ms. Henderson?
I was going to answer that, but you gave him the answer. Because I am running because I want all of the citizens of Virginia Beach, Virginia Beach to be heard, not just the select few. So I'm for the citizens and what is best for our community as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Nygaard?
Well, you know, I'm wondering if there's, we want to talk about the elephant in the room. Somebody probably thinks it's me, and somebody thinks it's not me. Many of you knew that I was for years Republican. that I was for years Republican, and most recently, you know, well, years I was Republican, I was a McCain elector, who served with my father in the Navy. I was a delegate for Romney, and I was a Republican for many years. Recently, I ran for the congressional seat as Democrat, because things changed. And I think our economy has changed. And so I think that one of the focuses is we need to look at how we can revitalize economy, how we can incubate small businesses, take advantage of technology. So I would say that my position is that I want to represent the people. I want to represent all of you and build small business that's not, that's not so government-heavy. I think that we need to focus there, so.
I'm on the taxpayer's side for sure. I think everybody in this room pretty much knows that. Ninety percent of all businesses in this city is small business-related. Government should not be picking winners and losers. It's just not how it's supposed to be. We've taken a different turn in our city. They believe in picking winners and losers. For whatever reason, these developers have got in their head, "Please, city, give me a subsidy." I just, it's, to me, it's baffling what they've done to the city, the debt that we're in because of what they've done. The lack of, the lack of revenue return to the general fund is crazy. It's absolutely bizarre. And I, at the times, because RK, you appear like you're a little angry. I said, "Well, sure I'm angry." I call it the reverse Robin Hood, the Robin Hood from the poor giving to the rich. And that's exactly what they've been doing in this city, and it needs to stop.
I might go a little Star Trek on you, but the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few and the one. Very easy. Like I said at the beginning, it's time the priorities of the people of Virginia Beach become the priorities of Virginia Beach. I'm a normal citizen, just like everybody else. I'm not a business owner. You know, I've lost a job due to a company-owned bank problem. I know what that's like. I think we need people on city council that know what it's like and what our struggle is out there. I'm on your side, not on the developer's side.
There are some things that really government is best suited for. They don't do it efficiently, but the public schools, our public safety, our firefighters and our police officers, our roads and transportation. We even choose in Virginia Beach to have a government that provides recreation centers for us. City of Chesapeake doesn't even have a public pool. That's a decision we make as a citizen of Virginia Beach. And there are some things that government do best, because government is really the only entity that can do that. But I'm on the side of sunlight is a disinfectant, openness and transparency, a rational conversation with the citizens of Virginia Beach to talk about these issues, and to talk about, are you willing to pay for an eighth recreation center in Centerville? And it's important to have that conversation with the people. So I'm in favor of having those conversations and having those discussions, because there is some stuff that only government can take care of.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm on the side of the voters. The voters are the ones that make the decision as to who serves in public office. I have friends who are Democrats, I have friends who are Republicans, and I have friends who, I'm not sure what they are. The truth of the matter is, they're voters. And so I try to do what the voters tell me to do on every occasion when I vote in city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the question and answer period of our forum. We're now going to take the one-minute closing statement. Mr. Manskel, you have the floor.
It's been a great informative forum, and I want to just come back in touch one more time on the importance this year of this election, because we have an opportunity this year to unseat the entrenched power that we have in city council right now. When you have all this entrenched power and long-term incumbents, you end up with a situation where you're ignoring or deferring critical maintenance in favor of throwing millions of dollars at special well-connected interests. You get a government with an open door to these connected interests, but when average residents want to make their voice heard, there's no one there. You have slated challenges up here that favor district voting and term limits. You have an opportunity this November to essentially make that happen, to break this cycle. And to break this cycle, we need a strong unified grassroots movement to be able to vote out the entrenched incumbent. One of the other candidates for Lynn Haven has already recognized this, and so last night, as I'm proud to announce, Kerry Reynolds announced he's withdrawing from the race and endorsing me. So I'm out of time, but anyway, I vote for Lynn Haven for change.
Again, I'm Suzanne Henderson. I'm running for Virginia Beach City Council in the Lynn Haven District. And one thing I did not say is I actually am the secretary of the Republican Party of Virginia Beach. I've been that for the last several years. Before that, I was vice president of one of our women's clubs, the suburban Republican Women's Club, so I've been very active in our community. And I want to make all the citizens of Virginia Beach a priority. I believe that we have not been represented, we have not been heard. We need to fix flooding, we need to fix our infrastructure, we need to take care of our police, fire, and rescue. Public safety is really important, and our small businesses. We need to streamline it so that it's easier for them to become business owners in Virginia Beach. So please vote for me, Suzanne Henderson, Lynn Haven District, November 6.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nygaard?
Again, I'm David Nygaard, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I've been almost, I've been here since Virginia Beach was called junior high school. I will say this, I hear a lot of problems around here, and I, and you know what? They say it shouldn't be like this, and it should be. But what I'm trying to do is provide some actual solutions. I like to test ideas and throw them out there, because I think as much as we need to have creative solutions. That's what I hope to bring to city council. One of the things I've talked about often is public safety, and I haven't really heard a lot about that tonight, and I've been very concerned about the public safety. I mean, we just had, domestic violence is a real serious issue. We just had a young lady who was murdered as a result of domestic violence. She called 911 four times, and the police walked away. I have a problem with that. I think we need to address some of those issues as well. And I don't hear anybody talking about the fact that the police walked away from this young lady when she asked for help. Now, listen, Virginia Beach gave everything to me. When I lost my business, I relied on Virginia Beach to rebuild it. And when I had a heart attack a year and a half ago, it was, first responder was Virginia Beach to save my life. So if you give me the opportunity, I'll go and give you everything.
Mr. Kowalowicz?
I want to take the time to thank you for coming out tonight. Virginia Beach is in our at-large voting system, and you can cast a vote in all districts, even if you don't live in them. We talked about that tonight. November 6 is your opportunity to change the course of your government, from a good old boy's special interest government to a government that believes in a level playing field for all citizens and taxpayers. I'm going to leave you with a couple beliefs that I have. A compromise on a bad deal is a bad compromise. A compromise on a bad deal is a bad compromise, and that won't happen with RK in there. If corruption doesn't matter, then no election will ever matter. If corruption doesn't matter, then no election will ever matter. Vote RK.
Again, thank you for hosting this tonight. I want to refer back to one of the questions I talked about with hiding information of the vast amount of data. Because again, as an IT guy, one of the things I want to give each and one of you is the power of information. We can take that data. I built databases, I manage databases. I want to put the city on a citizen relationship management reporting database system. Y'all know John Holland. Took him eight months to investigate voting records. We put the city on a proper CRM like this, you could do in eight minutes what took John Holland eight months. That's the power of information. You all deserve it. City council deserves to be held accountable by it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin?
Thank you again for being here tonight. My name is Brad Martin, and I am your counsel for the Bayside seat in the city council election this November. My mom and dad met in Home Room at Princess Anne High School right behind us. It is, this city is my love. I love living here. I grew up in Tidewater, I went away to college, and I came right back to Virginia Beach, and I spent my entire adult life in Virginia Beach. It's where I'm raising my son and building our family. We love this city. I have a skill set of civil engineering and business ownership that is not represented around that table in city council right now. I bring a expertise to the flooding issues that we have, to roads and transportation, to challenges that we have, whether we do or don't do the development deals. I want to serve this city, and I love this city. My name is Brad Martin, and I'm your Bayside candidate for city council.
Mayor Jones?
I'm running for reelection to Bayside City Council, because I care about Virginia Beach. I care about, cared about Virginia Beach when I bought Lake Gaston to the city and got us an independent water supply. I care about, cared about Virginia Beach when I sponsored the program to redo 32 elementary schools in our city, which we're finishing the last once now. I care about Virginia Beach this year, when I put together with the help of other council members a budget where we didn't raise taxes on the citizens of Virginia Beach. I cared about Virginia Beach when I worked on the Oceana Land use conformity committee and saved the jobs that we have at Oceana. I care about Virginia Beach, and that's why I'm running for reelection for the Bayside City Council, and I hope that we can get above on November 6. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's have a big round of applause.